I'd like to call to order the City of Belvidere Council meeting for Monday, August 12. Madam Clerk, can we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Cooper. Mayor Mark.
Here, please.
Councilmember Kemenitzer.
Here.
Councilmember Lynch.
Here.
For the record, Councilmember Wilkinson is absent.
Thank you very much. Begin with our reports and presentations. Do we have any city council reports?
I have one.
Please.
I, as a Belvidere's representative and a commissioner to the Transportation Authority of Marin, earlier this month, they attended a workshop which all of the commissioners participated in, and we had a facilitator helping us assist our TAM staff in setting priorities as they develop the county transportation plan, short-term plan, sort of 2030 long-term vision, 2050. And it was very interesting, and I just wanted to report that we talked a lot about the priorities. As you know, TAM administers a lot of the funding for transportation throughout the county, and so we talked about a wide range of things, but things like would we prioritize regional connection, intercity connection, multi-mobility, a wide variety of things. But what I wanted to report was, one of the things that came out of this is that we wanted more resources to be devoted to data and technological research, and really the scientific and factual knowledge, logical basis for decision-making. And I found the whole workshop very helpful, but raising that to a priority level, I thought, was particularly interesting, particularly as we begin to look toward the effects of sea level rise and the effects of our housing elements and other uncertainties over the next 20 years. If anyone's interested, they can look at the TAM website, and perhaps I can provide a link through the next Belvidere newsletter for other public comment.
Thank you so much. Any other city council reports? I have one, but I wanted to ask our city manager if you're presenting in your reports an update on the comprehensive user fee study, or would you like me to?
Go ahead.
Just to just report to the council that Councilmember Wilkinson and myself, with our finance director and our city manager, have worked to put together a request for RFP for a comprehensive user fee study to review our user fees to document and justify it historically, as well as moving forward, going forward to, all in attempt to develop a program of cost recovery as high as we possibly can, so that user services not in the broader public benefit are paid for, and we're not, in a sense, supporting private use out of public funds, more than it should necessarily be. And we went through the review process, interviewed two very, very capable and good firms, and selected ClearSource, and they will begin their engagement, I believe, September, sorry, October 1st, in an attempt to get the user fee presented and developed for fiscal year 25, '26. So you'll hear more about that as we go, but that was selected and authorized for, to begin work, as our finance director pointed out in October. Thank you. Any public comments on our city council reports? Seeing none here?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. I'll now turn it over to our city manager for his report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Mark. I do have a few updates and general information to share this evening. I'll start off by highlighting an important training opportunity for senior residents. As elder financial abuse continues to rise in Marin, it's vital that our older adults could equip themselves with the knowledge to protect against scams, fraud, and identity theft. Marin's financial abuse specialist team, also known as FAST, will be offering a training session in Belvidere on Thursday, September 5th, from 3:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. They'll be here in the city council chamber. This session is designed to empower our seniors with the tools and information they need to safeguard their finances. The city hosted a similar training last fall, which was a huge success, so if you missed that training, be sure to plug in September 5th from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. in your calendars. Second, I am happy to report that both Robbie Wilson and Sidney Mosley have completed their summer internships with the city. Both interns focused on assisting the planning department with research work and also short-term planning initiatives. Some of that work related to implementing the city's 2030 Climate Action Plan goals, reviewing private and public parking throughout the city, and working on the city's cost recovery model for the planning and building department. Between the two of them, they logged nearly 160 hours, really helping the city hall team jumpstart these key priorities. So I want to give a big thanks to those two for their time and their enthusiasm. They both did excellent work, and we wish them the best of luck with the upcoming school year. Moving on, you may have noticed that your voices in the city council chamber are being broadcast a bit louder and clearer than before, and that's not your imagination. It's due to a much-needed audio update that was approved in our new 2024-25 fiscal year budget. I want to give a shout-out to Beth and Helga for making this happen. I'm sure everyone in the room is grateful for the change. Concerning Mallard Point, there's been really no significant changes in the last month. The developer has been meeting with the BLPOA, and Thompson Dorfman's team has been working on applications for federal and state permits, still working on their demolition plan, bulkhead design, and the final map. So there's no new news on when these are expected to be submitted for our review, but we will, of course, keep the community updated on any developments. And then finally, I want to remind everyone about the upcoming City Managers Coffee Hour. This is a new opportunity for residents to engage directly with me and ask questions and share their thoughts on the future for our community. During each event, I'll invite a staff member, a resident volunteer, or city council member to join me. This is the first of what I hope to be an ongoing trend for residents to connect directly with City Hall in an informal setting, which they may not get otherwise. The first meeting will be on Thursday, August 29th, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. We'll be holding that at Rustic Bakery. I encourage everyone to come by, connect, and be part of the conversation. And that's all I have for now.
Thank you so much. Looking forward to that. Any public comment on our city manager report? Seeing none here?
Mayor Mark, I see no hands raised.
Thank you very much. I'll now move on to the consent calendar. It's a calendar consists of items that the city council considers to be routine, or council has discussed previously and do not require further discussion. Unless any item is specifically removed by any member of the city council, the consent counter will be adopted in one motion. We will take public comment on all the items in the consent calendar when it is called. Would any, are there any questions or comments on the items, or would anything like to be pulled for discussion?
I wanted to pull 4D and 4E.
4D and 4E?
Yes.
Wonderful. Any public comments on the consent calendar or questions? Seeing none in the room?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. If I could have a motion for the balance of the consent calendar for A, B, C, and F, noting that the minutes from July 8 would be members who were not present, myself and I think Councilmember Lynch, would be noted in our vote for that?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have a quorum?
Good evening, council.
So that item probably has to be not voted upon, right?
You may vote on the meeting minutes, even if you weren't in attendance. My apologies. I took your comment to just be a notation to those meeting minutes that you and Councilmember Lynch were not present. I did not take that to be a no or an extension.
Okay, so we're noting that we weren't present, but we can vote to adopt the minutes.
That's correct, Mayor. Yes.
Thank you. I so move. Or you have a motion.
Motion and a second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we don't have a staff report for 4D and 4E. Councilmember, I also have some questions and thoughts on item 4E, so why don't you ask your questions or your comments on 4D first?
Okay. First of all, my question is, is this a time-sensitive issue that we need to vote on tonight? If it isn't, I was going to ask if maybe we would prefer having it come back as a discussion, because I did have, not huge questions, but some questions on it. But if it's time-sensitive, I'll go ahead and ask the questions now, if you would prefer that.
It is time-sensitive.
Okay.
It was the 2023 plan.
Okay.
It was a multi-agency effort, which is running a little bit behind its normal schedule. It's important for FEMA funding as well. If we do have a disaster day, we have an updated plan on file, so to the best of my ability, I'll answer the questions you have.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess one of my questions was, do the city council members have any role in this emergency training? Are we to be trained like the staff was trained, or is there any responsibility that city council members have to help at a time of evacuation, or is that not something that's brought up?
I don't believe that's something that's contemplated in this plan. I think what you're referring to is the Emergency Operations Plan, which we are going to be adopting in the next month or so.
Oh, okay.
That's our Joint Response Plan that really gets into the detail like you're thinking about. This is more of just a regional type of assessment. It does look at Belvidere specifics, but mostly focuses on what are the hazards and how do we mitigate against them, less on the operation side for a disaster.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thanks. And then I sort of focused on the Belvidere mitigation plan section. So one of the things was Goal 3, and I just wondered if we had contacted the two yacht clubs in St. Stevens, it's page 109, St. Stevens Church, to see if that's something that is necessary, but maybe that is also that emergency plan that you're talking about and not this particular one.
Yeah, so that is identified as Goal 3. Again, their goal is not necessarily, you know, this is work that's been completed. There are things that we're going to be focusing on upcoming. Yes, you're correct, those.
Is this something we want to think about?
Yeah, the collaboration that we're going to have with those agencies will happen as part of the EOP.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I was a little confused by, on page 110, Goal 6. Are we near a high-hazard dam failing? Or do we not need Goal 6?
Again, some of the.
That's a county thing.
Some of the language in here, it's required by FEMA.
Oh, okay.
You have to assess certain threats. It's addressed in here. I'm not aware of a dam threat that Belvidere would have.
I just didn't know if we're supposed to be Belvidere-specific in that chart, or if it also included all of Marin, because I know that can be. Then I know there was a mention on page 115 about getting residents to participate in Alert Marin, and I didn't really have a question about it, but I was trying to think of a way other than putting it in the newsletter, which we've done. And I kind of thought about making poster-type signs with a QR code that maybe that we could put around town, or at least have here at City Hall, and the QR code could take you right to Alert Marin for signup, as an option for trying to get the word out. So I was just brainstorming that. And then the only other thing I had was, I wanted to ask if it's possible that the city council be updated annually on the progress toward meeting these goals. I particularly was, I found them really interesting, because being on the parks, open space, and lanes, there was a lot of focus on lane, on our open space, how important it is to safety, how important it is for evacuation. And I think, given the new members on park, open space, and lane, I think it'll be really useful to be able to share this hazard mitigation plan with them and emphasize the needs to get the lanes more usable, some of them, and how important it is to keep our open space open space. So, thank you.
Congratulations.
I have one question about that. I just wanted, I could mention this privately, but it's worth mentioning here, because participating and contributing to a local hazard mitigation plan, there is at least an argument that gives you some priority in grant applications that I would urge staff to notify those at CalOES about tonight's adoption, just so that we keep letting them know that we're moving ahead. And thank you for pulling this. I think it's a very good discussion, and it was a very interesting document.
Thank you. And our city manager mentioned the upcoming Emergency Operations Plan that is separate, but certainly related to this local hazard mitigation plan, and we had discussed, and I just wanted to reiterate, as Robert had, that part of that presentation is not only the local, sorry, the emergency operation plan, but how city staff are trained, will be trained, what that schedule is, what roles, if any, as you pointed out, would be for city council members, mayor, vice mayor at that point in time, and how we'd integrate with the public on that. So that will be part of that discussion, how the city is doing on that process and what is scheduled to do. Thank you. So with that, can I ask for a motion to adopt this resolution approving the City of Belvidere's annex for the County Local Hazard Mitigation Plan?
I so move.
Thank you.
One second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I didn't call public comment on that. I apologize. Why do I do so?
My recollection, Mayor, is that you did invite public comment on all the consent items at the very beginning, but if you do want to provide additional opportunities, since we did have.
I can just ask for public comment on item 4D, the adoption of the annex of the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan? Seeing none here?
There are no hands raised.
So I think we can revert to our motion in our second. If we need to do it again, that's okay. Okay, thank you. The next item, 4E, motion to approve amendments to the APM Policy 14-1, staging and parking review criteria. Councilmember Cooper, do you want to go ahead as well?
Sure. So I had one question about APM policies. Are they considered discretionary or mandatory?
We would apply them in a mandatory fashion.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So that goes for all APM, not just this one?
Yes, that is the general.
That's the point of.
These are additional rules to supplement the Belvidere Municipal Code. I suppose I would note, just as a general matter, to the extent there are any potential conflicts between the code and the APM, obviously, the APM would give way.
Right. Okay, thank you. So under 14.1.3, of course, I have to comment on this, new building permit applications shall be posted on the website and in the city's newsletter? Do we post building permit applications in the e-newsletter? Beth, we're going to have a problem if we do.
I think that's a carryover policy from a number of years ago.
Oh, okay.
Where we may have done that. Currently, it's not our practice, though.
Okay.
E-newsletter itself, we do have it posted through our permit software, where someone can go online through the public portal.
Right.
But we can amend that easily.
So, yeah, I would suggest, because.
Thank you. Appreciate the pointer.
Yeah, what do they mean? So, and then I had a question about the 100 feet where you notice neighbors up to 100 feet, and is that because construction vehicles can only park within 100 feet of the project?
No, the construction vehicles, if we're talking in regards to the three orange tags that we provide for building permits, can park anywhere on roadways within Belvidere. That is a carryover from the interdepartmental policy that this new policy came from, and that was, I believe, at the time, an effort by staff to notify the adjacent neighborhood as to what's going on in their neighborhood, just to make them aware.
I mean, I think it's a great idea. I just didn't know if it also tied to.
No, there is no correlation or any type of regulation that limits construction vehicles parking within 100 feet of the job site.
Okay. And then I was a little curious, the term "potential violations," and I wondered why it isn't just called "violations." I didn't know what was, what made them potential. It's the title. The heading.
On the next page.
Sorry, I have my notes.
We can remove that.
Okay. And I understand the first violation, second violation, third violation, and then the project is red-tagged. Was there ever a discussion about imposing a fine after the second violation, before shutting down, as a means to sort of get attention if it's continuing to happen?
No, we had no discussion on that. We do have the opportunity to do so with an administrative citation that we can put in there that is able to be issued by myself, or the building inspector, or a public works employee. It totals $100 by code, it's the maximum, but we can add that in there as well, if councils so wish.
I don't know.
You stole my thunder. That was my comment.
Sorry.
No, no, absolutely. I mean, it's validating exactly what I had, was my question, too. I believe that one and two are too similar, and I believe two should be certainly the verbal and a written notation in the file, and the administrative citation to show the tone and the progression to item three, which would be the stop-work order. So I agree that in that second violation should be an administrative citation, to the extent that is legally allowed by our code.
Yeah, if I could just add a little bit to the discussion.
Please.
Mayor and Councilmember Cooper, I think it's important to understand that the staging and parking plan is usually instituted through a condition of approval for a project, so it's tied to the project, and obviously, the circumstances that require that condition is something sort of universal through the city, to control parking and how many parking spaces are occupied. But it is sort of a planning approval, as opposed to sort of an across-the-board rule that we can impose fines for violations. So I think if the council is inclined to wanting to build in a penalty, or fine, or what have you, I think that would best be done through a code amendment. Not to say that's out of question altogether, but that's something that we would need to take a closer look through in ordinance.
So, by a code amendment, we already have it in our administrative citation code to allow a building official to do something like this that is a violation, but we don't have the underlying code that would be a violation of, is your point?
Yes, I think the city would be in a better position in terms of actually enforcing and collecting such a penalty if it wasn't the code.
So where would such a code exist? We would have to stipulate that a building permit has three parking permits, and if an applicant or a permit holder is in violation of that, they're subject to a written warning, a verbal warning with a written filing, written warning and a citation, and finally, a stop order. We'd have to immortalize that in our code.
Yes, I think we'd have, obviously, I'd work with the building official, flesh that out, and then we can come back and present that to council, if that's the council's direction.
How do the rest of the, I mean, clearly, you and I feel, as a matter of transparency and effectiveness, I mean, parking has been one of the largest impacts we've uncovered, certainly through our Construction Impacts Committee, that most people in the community felt that the parking regulations didn't have enough teeth and were commonly and not sufficiently adhered to. So.
I think it's a really good point. If it is elevated to a code amendment, we don't really know exactly where at this time. I would really urge staff to propose an amendment that's very clear about who issues the citation. So right now, we don't know whether it would be public safety or planning, but, and that might inform who is authorized and obligated to issue that citation, but that's been one of the issues that we've struggled with in the past.
Would the police department ever be in a position to issue that? I mean, is our municipal code different than criminal code or misdemeanor?
Difference in the code. So in violation of the parking and staging plan and the three orange tags, the building department, or possibly the public works department, would be the one to issue the administrative citation. If there is illegal parking or traffic violations, things like that, that would be the police department, but that would have nothing to do with the three orange tags, which is kind of what this policy is based off of, and the amendments going into the APM were for the three orange construction tags provided with a building permit, and that would be the job of the building department most of the time to enforce that and issue the administrative citations. However, the public works supervisor or his employees could also issue those.
If it was elevated, if it was documented as municipal code, would that authorize the police department to do that?
No.
I would have to take a closer look at our options, to be honest, Mayor. I'm not, I don't feel terribly comfortable answering all those sort of ways this could be implemented without consulting further with staff.
I have a quick question. Do I understand correctly that we presently, in the code, have a provision that allows for an administrative fine, a $100 fine, for a violation of some provision of the building code? Is that in there now or not?
I do not believe it's the building code. I believe it's the municipal code that the administrative citation specific code section addresses. Violations of the municipal code, the staff now has the right to issue citations for those.
Oh, for a violation of the municipal code?
Yes, sir.
All right, I got the problem. Understood. I certainly agree, we need, I certainly agree with my colleagues that this is a very important issue, and I agree with that clarification, that we absolutely need to have it in the code. It's going to be more cumbersome with two readings and that sort of thing, but it's the right way to do it, and I think we should.
So what I'm hearing is that we should continue this item, because there's no sense having the administrative policy not reflect the underlying code, and have the city staff, Brian and our city council, come back with a hopefully modest but comprehensive, as Councilmember Kemenitzer talked about, municipal code that addresses this issue and identifies the steps a building official or public works official would have the authority to issue an administrative citation for this second stage of violation, and potentially a third stage to go along with a stop-work order, if that was deemed to be appropriate.
Yes, sir.
Makes sense? Thank you. Can I ask for public comment? Sorry, please, please. Oh, sorry. No more comments. You're right, perhaps you're right. Please.
Well, I apologize for not saying it again. I'm very glad that this is being here. I'm very, very grateful that it can cover all streets of your town.
Sorry, I think it's important that all the streets have the same rules for something like this, since they all put up with the construction. So thank you very much for doing this. Again, where things tend to fall down, of course, is how does it get monitored when there are violations? Is it only citizen reporting? And to whom do they report? What happens if city staff, like your staff, or public works staff who drive around the city a lot, if they see? or public work staff who drive around the city a lot, if they see an issue, they happen to notice in front of a construction site or near one that there are way more than three construction vehicles? Is that something that is generally upheld so that they would come back to City Hall and say, I saw this, I saw that? Or is it only based on citizen complaint?
Both. We do take in citizen complaints. They come in to front counter staff as well as the building inspector, the public works supervisor and myself. Additionally, if city staff is out in the normal business of their day doing inspections or working, public works employees working on the roadways or the city ride away, they do see something such as a violation of parking, they will stop and investigate immediately. Public works won't stop. Public works will contact the building department and either myself or the inspector will go out and investigate. It could be a violation of the, the parking regulations, or it could be something else. A lot of times the property owner shows up and a friend comes with them or the architect is with them.
Sure.
Things like that. So we go out and we do investigate immediately. We don't heavy handedly right away, you know, in, in, enforce all regulations immediate. We have to figure out what is going on. And based off that investigation, we then enforce the regulations.
And I imagine this new APM would help
Yes.
with that process.
Yes, it would.
Oh, good. And I did want to just remind everybody in the community that Marin Municipal Water District Sanitary Five PG&E, they are not under our rules. So sometimes there's a construction site going on and there's also something from the other agencies that are there doing work. And unfortunately, those trucks we cannot monitor them. They get to do whatever they want.
Those I wouldn't, I wouldn't go, I wouldn't go that far as they can do whatever they want. But in regards of the parking, those projects are not permitted, nor are they required to be permitted by state and local laws. Public utilities are not required to be permitted for their work. So they do not fall under the three parking tag rule. So the building department has no authority over the parking situation for those types of projects.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, just briefly, as you're considering drafting a code amendment. I, I think it's always worth thinking how it would operate in the real world. So that it doesn't end up just being a paper tiger. And I would suggest that you give some thought to when the citation should be paid and whether that should be part of the amendment. So I think it, it's important that people are on notice, you guys notice to the world through your amendment. As to whether this citation would, whether the citations would accumulate and be paid as honor before the completion, or whether there's a 10 day rule or a 30 day rule, which would be something more akin to a, a normal parking violation. Anyway, I don't really have the answer, but I think this is absolutely the moment at which you should really consider what would work best for Belvedere.
Will do. Thank you.
That's my relation.
My only last thought would be if we're going to add the notice in the detail that's we're discussing as being necessary for the code to have this kind of enforcement mechanism, we might consider whether we can delete this last portion of the proposed APM addition. If it's in the code, it seems to me it wouldn't need to be repeated in the APM. Does that make sense? I mean, it, it is, anytime you have the, the law written down in two different places and where one is subservient to the other, you run the risk of having conflicts and so forth.
I think in conversation with the city attorney, we would amend the policy and the policy again is, is made to add more information to a code, not try, not try and conflict with it. So we would amend the policy to make sure it supports the code and doesn't tear it down or conflict with it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further? Do you have, Brian, do you have sufficient comments? Do you have any questions for us as far as the comments or do you have that well noted?
No, Mayor, I believe it's, it's clear what the council is looking for for this.
Thank you. In that case, on this item, as we do continue it, I will take public comment though. Seeing none here.
Mayor Mark, there are no hands raised.
Thank you. So I don't think we need to vote on a continuation. We'll just continue this, bring back to, to city council.
Right. I think Brian and I understand the direction of council.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on to public hearing. Move on to item five A. An appeal of the construction time limit assessed to the construction project at 89 West Shore Road. I believe our, our director of building has the staff report.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Mark and fellow council members. Before you tonight is a construction time limit or CTL penalty appeal for the recent project at 89 West Shore. The project consisted of minor exterior improvements and landscape upgrades. Based on the project valuation of $80,000, the project was given a six month CTL timeline. The project was officially finalized 13 days after the expiration of the CTL deadline. That deadline includes the 30 day grace period that we provide to projects such as these. With the 13 day total of going beyond the penalty or going beyond the, the timeline deadline, a penalty of $7,800 was assessed to the property owner. An appeal of these penalties, the project contractor stated that the lack of knowledge for the necessary Tiburon Fire Protection District final sign offs in addition to the 14 day for 14 days it took for the fire department to schedule and then conduct the final inspection are the reasons for the delay. The contractor and the property owner request that the penalties be removed for these reasons. The CTL penalty appeals committee could not make the findings per the applicable code and recommend to uphold the fines and not relieve the fines as the appellate wishes. Staff is open for any questions.
Thank you. Council may now ask questions just after regarding the project. Just to clarify, this is 13 days plus the 30 day grace period.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Please.
Just to be clear, did this ultimately become a landscape project? Because they seem to remove everything that wasn't landscaping or was it?
It was landscape in addition to some upgrades that were on the deck such as a fire pit and the removal of the hot tub, which in the staff report later got removed from the scope of work. The landscape was always part of the project.
Right. Okay. But did it wind up once they kept removing the fire pit and the land and the barbecue and the gas line? Did then it just become landscape?
I believe there were other small elements. But yeah, mostly a landscape project at that point.
Okay. Well, the reason I'm asking, I don't want to be tricky about it, is I, I thought I read that landscape gets an extra 90 days if it's landscape only. So I, and I, I don't know all these that well. So that's why I'm asking.
There is a provision in our code that allows for a 90 day landscape extension. The contractor or the property owner, the applicant would have to apply for that.
Oh.
And I believe, I don't have the code right in front of you, but I believe that code section does not allow for that 90 day extension solely for landscape projects.
Okay.
So if it did then become solely a landscape project, the 90 day landscape extension would not be applicable to that project because it was solely a landscape project.
Oh, okay. Thank you. And then in your experience, what is the normal fire, Tiburon Fire time for inspection when people call? It seemed like this was a time that maybe the Tiburon Fire district was having some issues, but I don't know.
It, it is difficult for me to speak for a department that is not my own.
But I meant
But in my experience, it's a fairly quick turnaround
It's usually quicker.
Inspection requests with fire.
That's what I thought. Okay. So the two weeks is more unusual, or perhaps half of that two weeks is unusual. Could be
Possibly. And I, I would feel uncomfortable answering that question directly.
Okay.
Because again, it's not my, my department.
Thank you.
Can I ask, Mr. Vanson, the, the work was completed at the site by March 26, right? And no work, that's when the building department did its final inspection?
Yes, sir, I believe so.
And so no work occurred at the site after that?
It would be difficult for the billing department to verify. Because you could, the contractor could possibly theoretically always slip work in. But if you were to go by the record after the final building inspection, most likely no work occurred at that, after that point.
Okay. And, and, but to be, to be clear, the staff report doesn't assert or identify any work that occurred at the site after March 26?
Correct. It, I, I would. You know, again, I don't want to work it in, in absolutes. But it seems like the, the work was completed by that date.
Okay. And with respect to the fire department inspection, the memo says that the request, the contractor requested an inspection on March 29. And that the contractor heard back from the fire department on April 9, which is I think 11 days. Right?
Yes.
And then the fire department said they would schedule it for six days after that. The inspection on April 15, right? So six days after they initially responded.
Yes, sir. And so I was unable to verify that through the fire department. This information comes directly from the appellate.
Okay. And, and the fire department hasn't either confirmed or denied that timeline?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for our building official? Seeing none, I'd like to open up the public hearing and call for the appellate team to comment or to present. If they wish.
They are joining via Zoom.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, city council members. I'm here to respectfully appeal the fees associated with exceeding the construction limit on permit 20220835. We did receive the 30 day compliance order on March 5. However, as this is not a primary residence, it was not noticed until March 7. Initially, our project did include installation of landscaping and a gas line. Once we received the permit and we proactively, yes, not proactively enough, but consulted with the city inspector, we realized the gas line installation was too costly and reduced the project scope to just the landscaping. As this home is over the bay on 89 West Shore, the parameters for installing a gas line under a home over a bay were a little bit different than your standard gas line. So at that time, it was decided to remove that scope from the work. Following this receivable of the 30 day notice, I reached out to Brian Vanson on March 13 to finalize the project. He informed us at that time of a concern regarding a storm drain that goes through the property that comes out of 89 West Shore. We promptly addressed the issue and tried to provide Brian with some footage of the repair. However, I think that between the footage being filmed on a iPhone and, and the city's software, they weren't able to observe the video. So we were instructed by Brian to call for the final inspection and that the inspector would verify and we'd run a water test at that time. I met with the city inspector, the building inspector on March 26 for the final inspection and it was conducted. He confirmed at that time that all work was done in compliance with the permit that was approved. At that time, I asked the city inspector if there was anything else that was needed in order to finalize this permit. He said that he didn't know and he would look into it. A few days later, I proactively reached out and asked if there was anything else that was required. And that was the time that I was informed that I would have to have Tiburon Fire out to inspect the landscaping. As stated by Brian, it took roughly two weeks, if two, I believe, two working weeks, if you include weekends, it's, it's longer. To get the fire inspector out, we review the work that was concluded. He confirmed everything was done in accordance with the permit and he had no concerns with the type of plants that were provided. At that time, and that date that I met the inspector, I had to go by the building department to receive the permit card from the inspector had it in hand from our inspection. When I went to the office to receive that and go meet with the building inspector, I was then informed I would have to have a planning inspection as well. I immediately scheduled the planning inspection that day by emailing the gentleman name, I believe is Sammy in the planning department. He was out of the office that day. We scheduled it for the next day that we were both available, which I believe was on April 17, roughly two days later. I believe that given all the work was finished before the 30 day compliance order and delays were due to the necessary and final inspections, I respectfully request leniency regarding the fees imposed. And I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for the presentation. Do we have any questions for the appellate team? Please.
Hi, thanks for attending tonight. Did, did you, are you the person that attended the informal pre-construction meeting held here in City Hall?
I was never informed of a pre-construction meeting and I did not intend a pre-construction meeting.
Okay. Should we ask Brian? What, what?
Mr. Vanson, do you have a, who, who attended that meeting?
So this was not a formal pre-construction meeting. Due to the size of the project and the valuation, this is one of the smaller meetings we have within the, or one of the smaller projects we have within the jurisdictions. We would discuss, discuss everything at the counter at the time of permit issuance.
So, so who, who on the
Who attended that?
It would have been myself and Jeremy, the, the appellate right now. When we issue the permit, I go over rules, regulations, how to schedule inspections, working hours, things like that. Standard information, standard codes and rules that apply to construction projects. Smaller projects don't need as much time, don't involve as many departments. And that way we don't need to conduct a full, a formal pre-construction meeting with the police department, the fire department, the public works department, the planning department. This one, due to the size, was able to be conducted at the counter and all the information would be presented at that point.
So do you dispute that? Were you, were you spoken? Did you come to a meeting and discuss Belvedere's permitting process and building process that goes on?
I really like working with Brian and I'd hate to argue with him. I believe it was a lot less formal than that. I believe I brought in. I think I came in and I don't know if he was available at the time, to be honest. It's been quite some time. But I would recall if I was sat down and someone walked through all of the, the notes with me. I believe I was handed the the permit, the permit set, the permit card, and I think three parking passes and the extent of the conversation was, here's the, the documents and information. Thank you and have a great day.
Did, did you, did you receive the inspection, the city of Belvedere inspection card?
It was in the permit set. Yes, ma'am.
So you did, you did receive that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So on that, it did check that you were required to have fire department. Not sanitary, that you had to have the building department sign off and the planning department sign off on the final inspection. I'm just pointing out that
Yes, ma'am.
that that is there. And I'm glad to hear that you at least got that. So that, that's important.
Yes, I did receive. Yes, I did receive that card. And honestly, I don't have the the permit card in front of me. The 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 city team has that now, and I cannot recall if it's clearly demarcated as to what departments are required to sign off on the inspections, as there are a lot of departments listed on those cards.
Right. My last question is, were there any other changes during that six month permit? Other, I know you removed a barbecue, a fire pit and the gas line, but were there other, were there any additions or were there any changes at all to what you had originally proposed?
No, I do not believe so. We were actively trying to find a more cost effective way to, you know, perform the initial work, and we're not able to. And so we decided that time to only do the landscaping work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for?
Yes, I just want a similar clarification. This is Nancy Kimmitzer. Thank you for appearing tonight, Mr. Fall. We have a staff report. Have you read the staff report for tonight?
I was, I received the, what is this called? The city council meeting agenda? I don't believe I received a staff report.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure I understand. Our staff report says it at the time of the issuance of the building permit, a preconstruction meeting was held simply at the front counter. I think it's indicating a relative informality, but that it was at the front counter with the building official and the property owner's contractor. Are you the property owner's contractor? Would that have been you?
No, ma'am, I am the, excuse me, I'm the property owner's project manager. I work as the owner's representative. I'm not a contractor.
Let me ask the question slightly differently. Did you meet at the counter with Mr. Vincent at the time of the issuance of the?
Yes, ma'am, that's yes.
That does refer to you.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you, thank you. You've answered my question. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other further questions? No. Thank you very much. Let me now, are there any other public comments for the item? Seeing none in the room?
Mayor Mark, there are no hands raised.
Thank you so much. I'll now bring it back, close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for discussions or any or any further questions of staff. Questions of staff. Councilmember Lynch, would you like to go first with any thought or considerations?
Sure, thank you. I was struck by the fact that this project started out larger than it ended up being, that it was reduced at the end to simply landscaping and struck by the fact that the work was completed according to the records that we have before the thirty day grace period concluded approximately a week, and that no work had occurred at the site following that. The, I am certain that the discussion at the counter, however informal, made clear that all the sign offs are required. But I was struck also by the sort of uncontested timeline here that it took two weeks to get the fire department sign off. Eleven days to get a return call about when it would get would be scheduled, and then six days for that inspection to to occur. And I think it's, at least to my mind, not not crazy to wonder if you've taken out everything but the landscaping, to wonder whether a fire department sign off is it is actually still required. The the checklist says so, but I think it's a fair question to ask. And it also occurs to me that in a world where no work occurred at the site after March twenty six, and it took two weeks to get the fire department sign off, which I'm not saying is unreasonable, out of line, or anything like that. You know, this penalty is based on a thirteen day delay or a thirteen day overrun past the C T L, and fourteen of those days were were chewed up waiting for a fire department sign off. I feel like this is one of those situations where the purposes of the C T L, and I don't think anyone on either side here did or failed to do anything the right way. I just think we would not be serving the purposes of the C T L, which is to avoid overlong projects and the burden on the city and city roads and neighbors where we had a two week period trying to get the fire department sign off. And this is, maybe I'm getting soft in my old age, but this is a situation where I think we, I could get comfortable without issuing this C T L fine here.
Thank you. Councilmember Kimmitzer?
So I spent quite a bit of time with this this afternoon and 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 know the streetscape there quite well. And I really struggled with it because in the end, the the project was reduced. There's really a twofold purpose to the C T L, the construction time limit. And one is, as Councilmember Lynch referred to as the impact on the community, and and we really, really look at that closely. But there is another aspect to it, and that is the burden on staff that that occurs when any project goes on and on and changes whether more elaborate or or more constrained occur, staff really has to put more time into this. So I have a question of staff, may I ask again? We had previously amended our cost recovery program. And would a small project like this be subject to the changes in that that charge the applicant additional fees at the time of completion if they have exceeded the deposit?
Certainly not the, I'm just certainly not, we actually delved into this in the in the fee, cost recovery in our fee structure, certainly not the the appeal of the C T L. That's a fixed fixed fee. So that would not be, but perhaps the broader detailed project review and still inspection and so forth. Sorry.
Thank you very much.
Your answer is yes, we we take in the design review deposit and we build towards that deposit. And so certainly on a project that changes or is prolonged, we would continue to build towards that deposit. Am I understanding your question?
And was it done in this case?
I I'm fairly certain was. Sammy managed this project, but I can go look into I work and make sure.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick follow up to that?
Sure.
But but when would a design review deposit be reconciled?
After the building permits finalized.
Okay, thank you.
So it would be invoice to the applicant later? I, for some reason, I thought it was done at the time of completion.
No, we wait till it's final because of this process of planning still going out and finaling the project after the building permits
Okay.
issued. So that is our last charge into that
Okay.
deposit based system.
Okay, so in this case, I do think that that the changes did burden the city. I was, I was looking at the staff report. Meeting after meeting was attended by multiple city staff. I think some penalty, I would respectfully disagree with Councilmember Lynch. I think some penalty is appropriate. I'd be open to some reduction to it, but I feel that our city staff took great pains to follow exactly the procedures that are in the code and the administrative policy manual giving, do note the same notice to this applicant that is given to project multimillion dollar projects. And so I feel that we need to validate the processes that were followed here to some degree. And so I would recommend some fine and looking through the permit cards that apparently were not actually carefully read by the applicant or the contractor. The inspection notices, checklists, documents that were given in this case that we give to everybody else. I think it would be penalizing the city to say no penalty would be assessed at all. So that's kind of how I feel.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper?
Well, I also am a little bit torn with this because it does seem that the applicant was aware of our process, but perhaps didn't review it, and I don't know who the contractor was. Most contractors that work in Belvedere certainly know the process. I'm assuming even if they didn't work in Belvedere, that every city has some kind of a finaling process. So probably shouldn't have been a surprise. However, I also don't believe that our residents should be penalized because the Tiburon Fire District was unusually slow to respond. So it does seem that that whole process didn't happen very smoothly. So I I would I would agree with Councilmember Kimmitzer to have it a reduction done. If you're going to ask me how much, I don't know.
Thank you. I I guess I'm a little less sympathetic to the to the to the process here, and I and I do agree with Councilmember Kimmitzer that the it's important to validate this process. I think this this project from a relative perspective is overly burdened because of the size of the project. The the three factors that really go into this are similar factors we we look in and we address for for many other construction time limit violations and their subsequent appeal, which is a change in scope. In this case, it was reduction in scope, but but ultimately extended the project because they were justifiably reviewing their options and 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 looking at the the additional costs associated with the gas line and the removal of the hot tub and such, and decided to not do that. But that turned out to be, even though smaller scope, a longer process because of that, really no different than a larger project, you know, coming across and and undiscovered or unrealized circumstance and having a project extended by that. That's not, that's not a city consideration. That's a, that's a, that's a change in scope brought upon by the applicant or a determination of the conditions on site, which is relevant to a small project or a big project. Lack of knowledge is not something I believe we can, as Councilmember Cooper talked about, be sympathetic toward. I mean, that's something that it's pretty clearly delineated in the staff, sorry, in the building permit documentation and as Councilmember Cooper did point out, most anybody who works here does recognize and realize that there is a sequence of permits to, sorry, sequence of approvals on a permit, and it is very clearly delineated in the approval card. And finally, a lack of responsiveness by an outside agency. Again, we can't be held responsible for that. It's disproportionate, given the scale of this project, but I don't see that. I think you should be should be arguably different for that. I could be voted out on the reduction in the fine, but I I I do see that this C T L analysis is consistent with our upholding of our fines for other projects. I know it's disproportionate here, but I don't know that that's necessarily a consideration from a consistency perspective with other projects. But like I said, I'm certainly open to other people's considerations or options relative to this to this particular fine. You have any?
Well, I would, I would support maybe half taking the seventy eight and doing half of it. That I'm just starting the discussion.
There's a, there's a proposal on the table to make it thirty nine, if my math's correct. I'm sorry.
Excuse me, mayor, my apologies for interrupting. I don't know if you want to provide Mr. Fall with any opportunity to provide a rebuttal?
I can do that. Mr. Fall, would you like to comment on the discussion you've heard at the podium so far? On the D S, I apologize.
Yes, thank you. I I would, I would like to touch just quickly on on two two items. As far as the the fire inspection goes, the one gentleman mentioned the the time it took to for them to respond, and I was under the impression, once I had the building final from, I believe it's Chinaro, that the the process for this fee had stopped. When I was informed to reach out to fire and I had finally heard back from them, they asked, I want to be honest, when I did hear from them to schedule, they asked for the importance of the the meeting. And at that time, I informed them it was for a landscape project and that we were trying to finalize. At that time, I did not, was not under the impression that this timeline was continuing. So the the gentleman gave me his next availability. I I don't know if I would have stressed that I was incurring fees if it would have been sooner. But once he did come out to review the project, he was there for about five minutes and told me he didn't know why he was there to perform the inspection. He didn't feel like he should have to inspect on a landscape project. I would also like to note that when I reached out to Brian on the twenty sixth and asked him what was required, I I was informed a building inspection final. When when you say final, in most municipalities, and I I believe I had this conversation with Brian and he agreed, in most municipalities, the building final is the last inspection that finalizes the project. It it is my ignorance that Belvedere does it differently. If I was aware that the other departments had to come after the fact, I would have scheduled accordingly. However, in most municipalities, you schedule your planning, your engineering, your fire, and then your building final. And the the building final is the the last inspection, you know, have occupancy of a building. When I asked Brian what was required for the building final, he said a building final inspection. So again, I didn't realize that all these other inspections would follow after. So that's just my notes as far as the sequence and in my knowledge of the sequence. Thank you very much for the opportunity for the rebuttal.
I have a question. Yep, Mr. Fall?
Yes.
It sounds to me like you're saying you are unaware of the inspection card that stated August twenty ninth, twenty twenty three. Did you, did you read that card when you got it?
Yeah, I did look at the card. But again, it it doesn't, it doesn't demarcate the the sequence, in my opinion. It provides the departments, and again, there's there's multiple departments. So I I might not have observed the the sequence correctly. I will admit that.
Thank you.
I guess I have a question or just a confirmation from our building official. My sense is that as the, as Councilmember Kimmitzer pointed out, the inspection card issued on eight twenty nine does list inspections as far as project completion inspections, one through four, one being the fire department, two being sanitary district, which was not checked or checked, no. Then building sign off, yes, and planning department sign off, yes, in that sequence. My sense is that, and that's just just a question to you, Brian, my sense is because of the gas and and the My sense is because of the gas and, and the broader scope of the work, the fire department was checked off. Did this landscape, certainly fire retardant landscaping is, is required. And the fire department would most likely check on that at some scale, as long as you follow a list that they provide. Would that alone have required the fire department approval? Or was it a legacy from the broader scope that wasn't, wasn't, wasn't amended when and if they changed the scope?
It was required due the, due to the original scope of work. Couple, just, I guess, points of record. Sole landscape project would not require a building permit. So the building department would not be involved. And so at that point, it would be the planning department that would send the landscape plan to the fire department because they do have vegetation management requirements. And they try to remove what they call pyrophytic plants from the area. And that's what they were looking for out on the site, whether the fire inspector knew it or not. That's what he was, was checking on. Additionally, Mr. Fall talked about how the billing department provided him with another inspection card. It, it could be that Mr. Fall didn't have the card and therefore couldn't check the boxes to see what was required. Because we did provide a secondary inspection card to him towards the end of the project. And he may not, he, I couldn't tell you what happened to the original permit that we provided to Mr. Fall, but it could very well be that he just did not have the card at that time. It could not double check the card to make sure what boxes were checked where.
So as, as a follow-up, it would be reasonable to assume that in a perfect world, the process with the applicants or the permit holders, a change in scope, removing the gas line, if they had come to change that scope, either upon their insistence or on the building department's understanding of the project and the previous approvals, they would have removed the requirement for the fire department inspection. Again, in a perfect world, I'm not saying that's even a reasonable world, but I'm saying in a perfect world, that would have happened sometime towards the end of the project when that change in scope would have happened.
I don't quite follow. I'm sorry.
If, if, if this, if this were to be done well beyond expectation, I'm not suggesting this would have happened because I would also argue that it would have been in the applicant's or the permit holder's responsibility to change the, the, to recognize we've taken now the gas out of it and it's only a landscape project. So therefore, the, the, the inspection requirements should change. If I was, if I was building a project and, and I, as Councilmember Cooper pointed out, it, it turned into a landscape project, I would have come to you and said, hey, I no longer need these, the, the building or the fire inspections. Should you take those out?
We, at that time, if you did come to us with, with that, we would require you to provide us documentation from the fire department that says they are not requiring an inspection from you. You would submit that to us and we would put that in your building file.
So it's not that simple. So wait, so even though the scope would have changed based on the initial issuance of the permit, those inspections are still valid and it would have taken more effort to not have them in there, seemingly.
Yeah.
Or some effort. I, I'm, like I said, a perfect world with, with a lot of extra work.
And again, the, the fire department, with the omitted work, the fire department still looks at the plants and the landscaping. They, they want to either have you remove what they call pyrophytic in the, in the plan review stage. We do send these plans to the fire department. Planning also sends them to the fire department in the design review stage to review and make sure, one, pyrophytic plants aren't being proposed to be installed. And two, maybe the fire department can work with the property owner and have additional pyrophytic plants removed as part of the larger landscape project. And so the fire department would still, as my understanding, the fire department would still need to come out and double check those plants.
I understand. Thank you.
I, I just had one other question, and that is I, I know that the appeal process does take a lot of staff time. And, but throughout the, the actual construction of this project, were there many meetings? Did they, did it require a lot of meetings between the initial one and the?
Correct. So the applicant paid a, an appeal fee, which pays for the staff time to, to conduct this appeal. The only real issue with this project was the, what appeared to be a minor blockage of a storm drain. And that was fixed relatively quickly between Mr. Fall and myself. We got that, I feel, taken care of in, in a short amount of time.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I, I think it worked out fine. Apparently, our public work supervisor let you know on February 21st, and it was about two weeks before the before Mr. Fall knew. And then, but it went quickly once it was found out. So, so you didn't have lots of meetings with him throughout the whole process?
No. Okay. It was a pretty straightforward project.
Okay. Great.
Thank you. So we had a proposal by Councilmember Cooper to reduce it to $3,900. Do we have any comment or thoughts on that?
I could support that compromise. And I would do that based on the record. I do think a penalty is appropriate given what we've heard tonight and the documents before us. But I am, I am troubled as, as Councilmember Cooper is that, that the project is so small that I think this penalty will serve the purposes of the C T L.
I respect all the comments from my colleagues. I understand. I'm in the minority here on this view. And I'd be willing, based on the positions that you've articulated, to impose some penalty here, but cutting it in half feels not rooted in a principle. You know, we get to $7,800 by counting days, 13 of them, by 600. And to say, we'll cut it in half because it feels like it's a small project and 7,800 bucks is a lot. And the offenses here, while I think entirely on the part of the, of the applicant, is, seems like a lot. So if we were going to reduce it, I would think we should try to anchor that in some number of days. And I don't know how we would do that.
I think that's a very good, I don't want to interrupt you, but you've written, I, I think that's a good, good solution, but remind me, the penalty per day is?
This project was $600 per day for 13 days.
It's difficult because we, perhaps you can tell us what it's reasonable to expect on, on the part of the fire department. I mean, obviously, it's not reasonable to expect next day's service. And indeed, I, I, the record reflects that our planning department gave pretty much first one day service. We have over 100 open permits at any one time, do we not?
At least, yes.
So in your professional view, then, what, what is customary or reasonable to expect from the fire department? Can you give us any data whatsoever, like general, that we might be able to apply?
I, I can give you my experience. Not empirical data, but in my experience, it's usually about a weekly time to schedule an inspection for many jurisdictions throughout this, throughout the state. Some larger jurisdictions and busier jurisdictions are more. Some smaller ones, less busy or less. But I would say on average, it's, it's about a week to schedule. And once you call in, you'll get it with, within a week. It's, it's standard practice.
Well, I would suggest that since the penalty as calculated was judged to be 15 days, that, that the comments of staff would support a finding that one week delay on the part of the Tiburon Fire Department would be reasonable and customary within a general range of experience. So obviously, it's not day to day, but that would satisfy me.
Yeah. If you, if you took a week off of the fire department's response time, that would take it from 14 days to seven days.
13 days over the C T L date, 14 days for them to respond and conduct the inspection.
14 days resulted in being 13 days over. So if you took a week off their response time, it would get us down to six days, I think, if I'm carrying the one correctly, which I think would be what, $3,600? That's at least a principle that I could wrap my arms around.
Can I just, just, I, I'm, I understand that and I'm but just, Brian, just to confirm again, so on March 18th, the city was notified that the storm drain was resolved. There was some back and forth related to that. And I think both the parties recognized and, and acknowledged that it was done relatively efficiently. Some, some technical issues, but nonetheless relatively efficiently, efficiently. March 22nd, the applicant removed and changed the scope. Obviously, late in the process, finished the process without sort of letting you know about it, but, but changed it officially to just a landscape project. So almost retroactively. You note that the building department conducted the final inspection on March 26th. Do you know when that was called in? I'm just working on something here. Presumably the day before, something like that.
Standard practice in Belvedere, it's called in the day before.
And again, if, 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 again, it's not, it's not yours or the building inspector's responsibility to look at the card. They don't have the card actually and know that the fire inspection wasn't done at the time. They would go out when they're called. If they had said, I can't sign it, the fire inspection should be first, that's well within a normal procedure. And if it were a larger project, that would likely have happened.
Yes, sir. And quite possibly, I, I do not know this for sure, but the card might not have been out on the site. Therefore, the inspector would not have had the card. Because again, if, if, once we flip it over onto the back, we see and standard practice is for the inspector to say, well, everything was good, but you haven't had fire or sanitation signed off. You've probably experienced that yourself. And you need to have those in before we sign off. However, we're done. Yeah. We don't need to come back out. We'll sign it at the counter, but you need to bring your card in and show us the signatures. Now, if the card is not, not on site, obviously, the inspector cannot provide that information on site.
Okay, I understand. Again, I, I think the scale of this project is, is hurting it on, on, on many sides as far as the the broader perspective. Because if it were a larger project, this wouldn't be an issue because in personal experience, they would not have signed off on this if they didn't have the fire and sanitary and other inspections that were on the card.
And they would have also had a, again, if it was a larger project, they would have probably had a rough frame inspection with the fire department as well, as well as their C 16 fire sprinkler contractor working with the fire, fire department to develop and modify the existing sprinkler system or install a new sprinkler system.
Thank you. So it sounds like we have a proposal for the reduction to six days, putting the responsiveness of an outside agency to the, a more reasonable seven days versus the actual 14.
I, I hear that proposal. On the one hand, I, I really agree that it's important to ground this in, in calculations that we use. I do want to emphasize that, in my mind, the willingness to reduce this is in part sympathetic to, to the reduction in size of this project. I, for one, do not mean to imply that going forward, every time the fire department is a little late in their response, this council would redo the calculations when our staff has, as Mayor Mark has pointed out, followed the procedures. So in my mind, it's very much a, a combination of things. I think it's fortunate that, that the, that that the evidence tonight of what would be reasonable to expect of the fire department meshes with our, our sensibility here, our, our desire to, to reduce it because it's just a landscape project. But I don't want us to get into a tiff with the, with the fire department, which also does the very best it can in responding to inspector requests.
I think that's a, and we can certainly move on. I, I, I think that's a very important point. And to my, my original comment, you know, I have more of a difficulty on reducing this than, than most of you, because I, I don't see the change in scope as a consideration. I don't see the lack of knowledge nor the reliance on, lack of responsiveness from an outside agency. But I understand and respect the decisions. So do we have a motion to alter the C T L fine for 89 West Shore to six days at 600 versus the 13 at 600?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Posed, nay? Thank you. And this fine will be reduced to the six days at $3,600. Thank you, Mr. Fall.
Thank you all.
Moving on now to item 6B, I'll state for the record that my residence is within 500 feet of this subject property, and therefore I must recuse myself from this discussion. And I'll turn it over to Vice Mayor Cooper and depart the council chamber.
Thank you. Okay, this item 5B is a public hearing on 22 Eucalyptus Road. Another construction time limit appeal. I'll just say that none of us enjoy these appeals. I think I can speak for everyone as you, you saw with the last one, we struggle mightily. So with that, I will ask for the staff report.
All right. Okay, this might sound a little familiar. Good evening, council members. Before you tonight is a construction time limit or C T L penalty appeal for the recent project at 22 Eucalyptus Road. The project consisted of the construction of a 662 foot, square foot addition, construction of a 793 square foot A D U, a large residential remodel and significant landscape upgrades. Based on the project valuation of, of $1.9 million, it was given an 18 month C T L timeline. The project was officially finalized 257 days after the expiration of the C T L deadline. That deadline includes a six month C T L extension and the 30 day grace period following the completion of, of the C T L date. A penalty of $254,400 was assessed to the property owner. An appeal of the penalties, the property owner and the project contractor stated that the project went beyond the C T L deadline due to unforeseen structural upgrades to the structure, unknown geotechnical issues, structural revisions to the site improvements, lack of knowledge of a non-compliant sewer line, extreme weather events throughout the project, effects of the COVID-19 pandemic, and efforts to carefully deconstruct the existing structure. The contractor and the property owner request that the penalties be removed for these reasons. The C T L penalty, the C T L penalty appeal committee could not make the findings per the applicable code to recommend relief of the fines and thus recommend the fines be upheld. Additionally, I would like to say that as per the staff report, that A D U that was mentioned in the original scope of work was removed from the project and was not constructed. Staff is open for questions.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for staff on this project?
A very quick one, Mr. Vincent. On page two of the report, the top first full paragraph, there's reference, excuse me, second full paragraph in the middle, there's reference to the first revision, which is modifying the construction of site retaining wall. the construction of site retaining walls. And the date there is September twenty-two. And the way I read this, I'm guessing that's probably a typo, and it should be September twenty-one. Is that right, or, or am I misunderstanding this?
No?
Excuse me. I believe that was a typo, and that's when the conversation for the removal of the ADU began.
Okay, so September twenty-one would be correct then.
I, I believe so, yes.
Sorry, thank you.
Councilmember Kemenet, sir, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay. So I just wanted to clarify, this CTL is for thirty-three weeks altogether. It was two hundred and fifty-seven days?
Yes.
Okay. And there seemed to be numerous revisions right up until almost the very end, and I was just wondering if any of them required review by the engineer again? Were, were any of these had to go back and have?
With, with the city's engineer?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, many of these would have gone to not only city staff engineer, but also the building department's structural and geotechnical engineer for review.
Okay, so these were not just simply a change, it required a lot of additional work and time for that work because of the type of change they were.
Some of them, yes. Not, not all of them, but yeah, some of them were, were bigger than, than some of the others.
Okay, thank you. And then I was curious, if you recall, in your meeting for the six-month original extension, which was granted, do you, are, do you recall what the reasons were given for needing that extension?
Not specifically offhand, but I, I seem to remember that a lot of them were very similar to the reasoning given in the CTL appeal.
But I, I was wondering that, so thank you.
Aren't they written in attachment four?
They, they were there, right? The same, they were almost the same reasons as the appeal reasons?
Yeah, they're, they're enumerated at the bottom of attachment four, which is the, the application for the six-month extension that was granted in September twenty-two.
Yeah. So I'm just, the only reason I was asking again is I was wondering if, well, I guess that comes later in the discussion. Okay. And then could you explain to me what that demolition issue of fifteen days credit is?
Yeah, of course. So per that, that code section that we have, and then again, we, we recently changed the CTL code, so this is under the, the previous
Right.
code. Under that section, that code did allow for the careful deconstruction of a structure. And that would mean taking individual boards down for most likely for reuse at another area at another time within the project. Normally, when we, we do have that happen throughout the course of a project, we are notified, and we can document that deconstruction. We could not verify whether that deconstruction happened for this project. We couldn't verify that it did nor it didn't. We did not hear about it, and we did not take photos of it or anything like that. It wasn't, as I recall, as part of their, their parking or their, uh, construction management plan, anything like that, that, that we could reference back to see that they deconstructed it. But a lot of times, with the age of these, these structures and homes in Belvidere, there's a lot of nice wood that can no longer be produced or isn't produced and, and costs a lot of money if people do have it. They call it reclaimed wood or, or other such names. And it is far more expensive than going to Golden State and picking up a unit of lumber. So someone will carefully deconstruct finished wood materials, just like we have here, in hopes to save them and reuse them towards the end of their project. And so that is what that fifteen days is for.
And, and so you're saying that normally that would be part of the initial plan so that you would be able to
Yes, because
Okay. Follow that.
The property owner, the contractor want that fifteen days, so they want us to know, hey, this is what we're doing, you need to put a note in the file that we have these fifteen days here. Because again, we just saw in the last project, fifteen days could have made
Sure.
a difference.
Big difference, okay. Thank you. I think those are the only questions I have.
My, Smear Cooper, I, I do have just one. Do you happen to recall whether during the period of the CTL, we'll call it the CTL penalty period, there were any encroachments, road closures, or this is not a quiz, but if you happen to remember off the top of your head or can let us know whether there was any activity that impacted the community?
Give us just one second, we can find that out.
I think that would be helpful, thank you.
After which date, Councilmember Kemenet, sir? After the, in, in the CTL penalty phase?
I, I believe it says here July twenty-two, twenty twenty
Following the CTL.
I'm sorry, plus a grace period. August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, per the staff report.
Yeah, we, we do have numerous encroachment permits during that time.
Okay, thank you. And, and this was a, if I recall, Councilmember Wilkinson is not here, but so I recall, there were a number of other construction projects going on during this two to three-year period on Eucalyptus. Am I correct?
On the Eucalyptus roadway itself, yes. During this time, we did have other construction projects being performed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. In, in that case, since we're done with questioning the staff, I'll open this up for the public hearing and call forward the appellant's team, if someone is here. Good evening. Welcome. I think you have to push a button so it turns
Now it's working.
There you go.
There we go. I am with Jordan, who is the general contractor, and with as well Phoebe and David, who are the architects for this project. So to start, yes, the project was a remodeling of an existing, existing house. We decided to keep the same type of architecture, to use the same footprint and to add one bedroom to it, to also redo the landscaping around it. And indeed, there were an ADU at first, which we removed, and you will understand why, as actually we are going through the project, right? So the other decisions we feel we made to try to keep the project simple was to, before start, we took care of the fire hazard, the trees, the pine trees that were downhill above the Jenkins, as well as the Eucalyptus trees that were next to the twenty-six Eucalyptus. We took them down, right, so that we removed that from having to do it during the project courses. We only used local contractors, local products, materials from CTD Fortis, Bay Area Bluestones, Texas stones for the, for the pavers, Marvin for the windows, et cetera. Means there's nothing coming from like abroad. We only had the same team all along. Strab, the aushers, never, the stop, the work never stopped. Right? So we, we felt like we did everything possible to keep things moving, right? And also knowing that with the COVID, we totally would have like issues with the supply chain, so we ordered the appliances like eight months before. We needed that, and we got them, right? So we had indeed nine revisions in total, and we can go through them. Most of them were indeed revision commanded by structural engineers. And because of what we found as we actually went through the demolition, and also some of the retaining wall with the landscaping, so indeed, it was probably work for the city. It was work for us as well, and we actually had no choice. I mean, this is something that we discovered as we went through. So when we started, so demolition started, it was not a hundred percent demolition, right? So we took forty-five percent of the house down where the additional bedroom was meant to be, and we salvaged the rest of the framing. That was the idea originally. So trying to also save on the, the time, the work, the materials, and so on. End of August, we got a message from Dyssinger, you know, our structural engineer, saying that the Westworld Foundation of the bottom floor is failing and unstable and need to be reconstructed. The current plan show also a wooden joist system in the area where it used to be the kitchen, and the two-inch-thick concrete slab is not suitable to build on top. So in fact, what that means is we had to replace all the foundations of the house, which is not typically what you expect when you do remodeling, even a good old remodeling. So what they had to do, so that was end of August. Then we had to submit the revision to the city, which got approved end of September. And then the demolition of the existing foundations, actually, we're completing beginning of November. And then, to give you an idea, March, the following year, we were pouring the last six piers of the, the new foundations, which we had to dig twelve feet deep into the soil, right, and deeper. So and all this happened across the winter period. So it took from September, end of August to April to really complete this lifting the framing, put it on stilts, and then putting the existing foundation out, breaking the slab, sticking it everything out, and rebuilding the entire foundations, putting the framing back in, and then restarting where we left it. That was one of the cause for the extensions as well, but even the six months was not covering that hundred percent of it. You always expect surprises when you do a construction work, right? But as I think some other people in Tiburon actually mentioned it, they, they discovered similar problems. You've got surprises with S and then surprises with like capital letters all across, and this is, I think, what we faced here to start, right? So that's the first thing really that, that happened, and compounding with the geotechnical aspect that I mentioned, the fact that when we did the soil testing, we had to, we found that we could actually dig only five feet deep, but eventually it, it had to be done like twelve feet deep, so it added a lot of work. The second thing which is happened really after after this extension is really the, the weather and how it impacted our landscaping. So just like also, we decided to keep the original architecture of the house to keep, it's a very special type. I don't know if you were familiar with twenty-two Eucalyptus, but you have a steep roof and I mean, we reproduced and all this architecture, including with the, the addition, which is extra work. I can show you some pictures on how the, the carpentry work was done. But the landscaping as well required a lot of work. We had to replace all the retaining walls. They were old wooden ones. We actually replaced them with like concrete retaining walls, especially as it's really keeping the hill behind the house like stable. We put the jut net on the, all the, the steep part of the, 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 the landscape, so to keep the soil like, and the grade like, stable during all the, the time of, of the work. The challenge we faced is as we started to do this landscaping, we got these two winters that you probably, I mean, you live here, so you probably experienced. I've been here for seven years. I felt like the first four winters, we, we had a lot of wildfires after, so I'm not training the wildfires for the wet, for the, for the rain, but the past two winters were really windy. Just like some other owners, my barbecue actually flew like fifteen feet from the deck to the, in the mud with the propane tank inside, so I don't know, I mean, probably was the very strongest of wind. So the challenge we had with, with that, with this weather, was really that the soil was so wet, and we had pumps like to put the water into the drainage all the time, that we couldn't actually get any rest period for like more than three days in a row to actually do the work, to actually level, to plant, and especially one thing which caused us a lot of impact on the delay was egress. The egress is, we did alone with pavers, right? So we tried also to do something like very natural. And it's, the base is, was meant to be like sand, and with the, the pavers, limestone's cut on them. So first of all, the stones, you couldn't believe it, they came from Texas, but they were delayed for four, four months because they got icing condition in Texas, and the wetso got frozen, so they couldn't cut the stones. So they, the quarry stopped working for like several weeks until actually they can restore the, get out of the icing condition, which I found for Texas was quite unusual, but I remember that it happened in January. Then we had also to change the base of the, these, these pavers, because you cannot use what was planned when the, the soil is not dry, because otherwise it's settled, and that's your paper's gonna be like not, not even. And we had to replace it with concrete to put the papers on them. So after four weeks waiting for like the rain to stop, and every three days, we gotta have, we had another, another storm, we changed our minds, like we, we, we have to carry forward. So this, between December twenty-three to March twenty-four, we were really fighting to complete the egress, and that prevented us, that prevented us actually to ask for a extension of the ninety days for landscaping, because the ingress was not actually considered a landscaping feature. It's considered part of artscaping. And just that piece, and we tried actually, and with the inspection, we built a temporary ingress, and we put landings with stones, and they created one, which was like, it felt more like a lagoon, because we had like this wet pond, and then we actually put a bridge on top, but was not considered actually sufficient enough to get it like approved, so that we could apply for the extension for landscaping. So we had no landscaping extension in fact. Eventually. So I think for these seconds, my conclusion would be that we made the choice to to build by respecting the original architecture. We made the effort, means you can see this picture, which shows actually what we had to do to really actually reproduce and keep this, this house the same. So that's, that was the before and after, if you haven't seen it. So you can see that we try to respect as much as possible. I think the, the code, the CTL is meant indeed to prevent disruptions to the community, but the code is also to make the houses safe, right, and sound, and also to integrate and blend, blend in the neighborhood. And we tried really hard to strike the right balance between all these constraints, and including the, you know, the, the number of trucks and the team that you can have on site. So maybe we made a mistake, maybe it would have been actually easier to just actually level everything and build a modern house with like, you know, more square probably, but it was not what we decided to do virtually, and I think in the end, it's what you have to assess tonight. Thank you for listening to.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? For the applicant? I, I'm not sure that I do either. I, I know you're aware of the CTL penalties because you asked for the six-month extension, so I'm assuming that your team also was very aware of the issue that we have in Belvidere construction issues in the neighborhood and the reason that we have the construction time limits. So I don't think I really have a question either. Okay, so in that case, is there anyone in the public that would like? And you have three minutes.
Okay, I'll get started then. My name is Phoebe Holshur, and I'm one of the architects for the Lefays. I want to comment on a couple aspects, the process of this project, and a couple comments in the staff report of the appeal. First of all, the unforeseen structural upgrades required. Staff contends that vegetation could have been easily Staff contends that vegetation could have been easily removed for the redoing of the foundation wall to see what was going on. And in fact, the existing house space was covered with a lot of mature planting and the exterior walls were covered in stucco and the interior flooring was covered as well. And there was no way to get a good look at these footings until all the demo had happened and we could actually see everything. And we know that we can't demo before the building permit is pulled. That's not how we do things here. Number two, COVID, effects of COVID. So the staff report says further numerous state and local policies, procedures have been established and put in place in an attempt to allow the construction industry to continue during the pandemic. And yes, absolutely. Really COVID though affected everything. And the point here is the backlog. The COVID affected the supply chain, as we all know. It affected working productivity. It affected access. In two thousand twenty one, none of us knew exactly how long that would take and its continued impact on construction. And then three, which was not in the staff report, but I do think it's worth mentioning. The timeline for the building permit revision, review and approval during the construction. I'm gonna take three examples. The eleven eighteen, let's see, submitted ten four and approved eleven eighteen. That was, sorry, I'm losing sight here, hold on here. Okay, so that was a six week construction review period. The next one, one eighteen twenty two was approved four seven, four seven twenty two. That's an eleven week construction revision review period. The last one I'll mention is two thirteen, submittal, approved four thirteen. That's an eight and a half week construction revision review period. That's a total of twenty five weeks, which is almost six months or about six months for these three revisions. I think there are nine total. This, everybody was slowed down by COVID. And this is something that the review periods needed to take longer too for all of these various reasons and all these parties. The revision review period was not in the control of the property owner, nor was the crazy and dysfunctional supply chain issues or the intense weather that did seriously impact the ability to work efficiently and the many unpleasant discoveries concerning structure along the way. The discoveries made because the property owners wanted to work with the existing house and carefully renovate it rather than tear it down. These discoveries, and I see it blinking, okay, I'm almost done. These discoveries led to the many revisions, which required lengthy reviews, which contributed to the delay in the project. There were various significant delays, structural discoveries, COVID nineteen, lengthy review times, many of which happened during a statewide emergency that lasted until Governor Newsom rescinded it February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty three. You know, that, that wasn't actually that long ago. To place the burden of these delays that were not in the control of the property owner on the property owner completely feels excessive and inappropriate given all of these delays that were created by this, the nature and details of these, this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that's? Okay, sure. And you also have three minutes for comment.
Thank you. I'm Jordan Guthrie, the owner of Strew Construction. I met early on with Brian at the C T L meeting. I've been a project manager for this project from the beginning, was off of it for a minute and came back on the end. I just have to say we had a great team. We handled all the processes as thoroughly and as quickly as possible. You know, these are surprises. These are things that came up and really bit us. It's not something you plan ahead for. It's not something that you could foresee. Like we said, like you do not plan to replace all your foundations on your house. You know, we had soils reports and said we were like three feet deep to bedrock. We hit like eighteen feet on a couple of these piers. You know, we just, Laurent was great the whole time. He worked with us, he did not want to cut any corners. We just really did the best we could with the project. We had like thirty people on site many days and that's really hard to do when you only have three parking spots, you know, on the street and multiple, like a couple staging areas. We pushed through, handled everything we could, the best we could. Laurent's really a great guy. You know, we worked together, gotten everything done. And I just think he deserves a little bit of leniency here, so whatever you guys can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Jordan, I had one question for you, if you didn't mind. I, I, reading through the list of all the revisions and understanding that some, some of these revisions were gonna take longer based on engineering review for the city. But some of them seem to be very late in the process. And I'm curious, you know, why a year later, there was something with the swimming pool? It doesn't seem like those decisions needed to happen so late. And where deck railing, I don't understand why some of these things weren't organized before.
There are one or two things that are client driven, but the majority of them were like huge structural issues that took a lot of time off the project.
Okay, thank you.
We can't, I'm sorry, we can't hear you if you're not at the microphone.
So for the pool, it's, we got an advice originally, the hot tub was on one side and next to the trough. And they said you should not do that because if you have a problem with the pump, it will actually empty the pool in the trough and then it can also spill out. You have to move it on the other side of the pool, which we did. So that was a recommendation from the pool contractor. And for the, the railing, I think the first, the rating we had on the original plan, they were wooden top over the glass railing. And then eventually the one we actually installed was out, was without that wooden top. So we had then to update the elevations, seeing that's the name, to removing that cap on top of the railing.
Thank you. Andrew, do I call for other public comment or is that it? Do I ask again?
I think you may just want to clarify whether there's any other public comment.
Is there any other public comment at this time? Any on Zoom?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, thanks.
I had one question of the contractor, which got interrupted. Could you return just a moment? So you referred to a soils report. So I assume there was a full geotechnical report done prior to pulling the construction permit on this?
Yeah, that's correct.
So did you feel that? So when you got all these surprises about, that required revisions to the structural revisions, multiple revisions to retaining walls as well as new foundation, did you feel that your geotechnical report was inadequate? I mean, there's a, there's kind of a cognitive gap here.
So what happens on a geotechnical report is they come out and they pick like four or five areas around the property and they drill holes. So what he found in his areas was accurate for what he found. But you don't dig a hole like five, ten feet away, you're gonna get a different depth. So, and he couldn't dig holes in some of the areas because there's other foundations or whatever in place. So it's just, I don't think he did anything wrong necessarily. I think it's just what you find when you actually dig into soil.
And that refers to both the retaining walls?
Yeah.
And the foundation? Because there's quite a few revisions pertaining to retaining walls as well.
Yeah, so if you're, don't hit rock on retaining wall, you have to get a taller retaining wall essentially. Dig deeper for the footing and then a taller retaining wall requires a different structural design and revision.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone, does anyone on the council have any other questions for the staff at this point?
I don't.
No. I guess I'll ask a question. It was mentioned that three of the revisions took approximately six months. Were those the type of revisions that we discussed earlier that required?
Yes, and most likely, I couldn't tell you again without looking through, you know, the multitude of documentation we have. But most likely, the longer ones included two reviews. And so we would have reviewed it first, provided any deficiencies within the plans, sent that letter back to the architect, had them revise the plans to address those deficiencies and then resubmit them to the billing department for review again. So the six weeks for such large structural changes is normal. It's about the same as for a normal building permit, large building permit. We have thirty business days, which is six weeks to review the plans and the calculations and the structural plans and everything. So it seems consistent with our timeframe. And again, the, the longer ones of ten weeks or whatever Ms. Holsher said seemed to me to be a review, a response from the building department saying the plans are insufficient. Here's how they are insufficient. Please revise them and resubmit them back to us and then we review them again.
Okay. And then I remember that in some previous C T L appeals, the issue of COVID came up. But can you remind me what, what was the law about construction time limits with COVID?
Yes, so I believe it was Assembly Bill fifteen sixty one at the time. And it provided up to eighteen months relief for projects that were active prior to the original shutdown of March two thousand twenty and whose entitlements or permit expired prior to December of two thousand twenty one. However, please don't quote me on those dates because I'm not sure. But it provided a specific timeframe that, and the project had to meet all parameters, not just one of the parameters of the assembly bill to get that extra time. The city of Belvedere also had, I believe, a sixty six or sixty eight day relief ordinance that was put in. But again, you had to meet specific parameters that this project did not meet.
Okay, thank you. I remembered part of it, but I didn't remember all of it. So thank you for the reminder. Okay. I, I have, does anyone have any other question?
Yes, I have a question of staff. As we look at, and I reviewed very carefully page two, the revisions list. What level of review were those? Was it, were those D R Es? Were they exemptions? Did some, any of those require a design review at the planning commission stage? There's quite a number there. So you don't necessarily have to go one by one, but I want to get a sense of that.
I'll let Rebecca answer, but it, just from briefly reviewing, it seems like there's possibly all of them, to be totally honest, some exemptions, some exceptions and possibly a planning commission in there. But I'll let Rebecca answer that.
Thank you. I mean, I would think of foundation, I would think the first one.
I have about eight exemptions here in our permit tracking system that pertain to this project that include retaining walls, stairs, site, sorry, site stairs, spa location, pool deck, change house roof colors, railing revisions. So on this list, this bullet point list, the interior bullet points and foundation structural revisions were not part of a planning review. But we have eight exemptions for this project in the life of its building permit.
And no D R Es? They were all exempt?
Correct.
Would they have been exempt if they had come to you?
In its entirety?
Yes. Or was there a latter effect here?
I think if it's like the retaining wall revisions, the stairs, the spa, the pool deck change, change house colors and roof colors, that would have risen it. If they all came in at once, yes, it would have been at least one D R E.
Okay. And, but not planning with you?
Sorry.
But not planning commission?
No, I think these are all, you know, improvements that were approved at the planning commission level, like the swimming pool and they wanted to move an interior spa to another.
Okay.
Location.
But what about the foundation and structural revision of January eighteenth? Is that the kind of thing that planning looked exempt?
No.
Or is that a D R E or is that not your department?
That is not my department.
As they say.
Yes.
Okay, okay, thanks. That's very helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Just to follow up on Vice Mayor Cooper's question about the COVID relief bill. The point, as I understood that bill and as you explained it just now, Mr. Van Zon, is that if somebody was in the middle of a project when COVID hit, they should get an extension of time because of the delays that were imparted by that event, right? And that if you, by contrast, began a project after COVID was already in full flight and in this case, eighteen months after COVID hit, then you were aware of the delays that could be occasioned by that. Is that fair?
I was not part of writing the assembly bill, but in, in reading it and talking with everyone, it seems like that was the intent at the time is to provide relief for ongoing projects. And again, by reading it and talking to other individuals, it seems like after that point, if you started a project, you were aware of what was going on in the world and the side effects that, that could or could not come your way based off of what was going on.
Thank you.
I do want to just mention for the benefit of my fellow council members. So I was mayor during that time. And, and I, and I want to say that Mr. Van Zon bent over backwards, worked overtime, made enormous efforts to require that precautions, every precaution go into place, drafted protocols. I believe there were over a hundred projects that needed to be shut down and reopened one by one. And really did a Herculean effort to, to make this disruption as light as possible on, on people who were trying to get projects done in the city.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Would you like to have any rebuttal time at this point, having heard the questions?
No, I just, I just want to say that with regard to the COVID, when we actually made the appeal, we didn't quantify it as a major reason for the delays. We had these delays that was explained by Phoebe on the, on the plans. But in terms of the site itself and the workers, we had a few days where people were sick and not on site. But it was not the, what we call that as a majority. But we wanted actually to really have a breakdown in number of weeks and days for the different elements that we put in details. I didn't want to repeat all of this tonight, just actually providing more of what was the general idea of the project. Why is it, why is it that we actually then went way longer than anticipated? And then eventually like leave it to you to decide.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll close the public hearing and we'll bring it back to council to deliberate and make a decision. So would either of you, with our three people here, it's up to one of you to start.
I can, I can start unless you'd like to. This is, I didn't struggle with this issue as much as I did with the one earlier tonight, not because it's not a big deal. I just think it's a little more straightforward and I commend the applicant and the project team on this home. I were, I think I was on city, I think I was on the planning commission when it came up for approval and I was impressed by the project. I've walked by the house, I've seen the result, it's stunning. And, but at the time, I wondered how. And, but at the time, I wondered how you guys possibly could pull it all off because you were undertaking a lot at that time, and that's without the surprises that come along the way. So it is a gorgeous project, but I didn't, I didn't struggle, I think, with the imposition of this CTL here. A couple of, I don't want to go through everything, but a couple of things caught my attention. The request for a six-month extension, which was applied for in August of 22, roughly a year after the permit issued, identifies all of the problems, many of the problems that are listed in the CTL appeal. And those include COVID, they include manufacturing delays, they include delivery of equipment delays, additional work, there's uncovered substantial framing problems and dry rot that had to be repaired or replaced. And then it lists last in order, about 60% of the foundation had to be replaced. And as a result of the demo and excavation and the reinforcement of new concrete piers and new concrete footings. And that is featured prominently in the appeal. It's listed last in order as the list of problems. And I think what I'm getting at is, well, these are all very serious problems to encounter in a job. And I have no doubt that Stroob did a phenomenal job, as they usually do, and that you worked tirelessly. My sense is that you encountered the kinds of surprises that big projects encounter. The one, the one thing that I did catch my attention, and in the appeal, you note the difficulties with the weather, and we certainly did have unusually wet winters. And your appeal at page two identifies the period of December 23 to March 24, excuse me, December 22 to March 23, as extremely wet weather that made some of the excavation work much harder. And that added two weeks of delays over that four-month period. I note in the staff report, that's the same period that our staff reports had 74 inches rain, you know, in that rain year, which is a full 50% higher than standard in the county. That as a numerical metric strikes me as foul weather. We all remember that period. I think that is a legitimate basis to extend or to reduce this penalty. And I would reduce it by the two weeks that you've identified in your, in the appeal as being the delay that you encountered because of that weather in that four-month period. But when we look at the other factors that are enumerated in the code as a basis that are beyond the control of the applicant and that are a basis to reduce the CTL or avoid a fine entirely, they are enumerated. And they're not limited to this, but it begins with extreme weather events, which I agree with, labor stoppages, natural disasters, and/or acts of war or terrorism. And I haven't seen in the record, and I've read it extensively, the kind of enumeration of lost days caused by labor stoppages, natural disasters, or other acts of war or terrorism. It seems like a lot of the difficulty was a misunderstanding of the scope of the foundational issues and the soils issues that were not adequately assessed or were not capable of being assessed because of the way the project was approached and certain things that couldn't be tested at that, at that time. And I feel for you. I can appreciate, you know, how much effort and heart went into this project. But I don't think, on the record that's before us, and on the standard that we're asked to apply consistently across all projects, that I could support a reduction of this CTL by more than 20 days.
So I agree with most of what Councilmember Lynch has said. I spent a great deal of time going through the record. This is a very high fine, and our penalty, it's not fine, it's a penalty. I understand that. But I do want to report, going back to the purpose of the CTL. And that is burden on staff and even more so the burden on the community. I don't know about my fellow council members, but I got a lot of complaints about this during the time. So I do know that the activity on Eucalyptus really did impact the community. And we hear this so often from our residents that are trying to live through other people's construction projects that just seem never to end. And that's why I asked staff whether there were additional encroachment and, or road closures on that dead-end road during the period of the CTL penalty period. So, so I did really have to take that into consideration. The other thing is that I know there were other construction projects on Eucalyptus during that time. The city has limited ability, correct me if I'm wrong, staff, but has limited ability to ladder construction projects and tries to deal with this in as equitable manner as possible. But when a project goes on even a couple, even a month or a couple of months, much less the length of time involved in this one, it has a cumulatively, individually and cumulatively, these projects have a really detrimental impact on the neighborhood. So tonight, as council members, we have to take that into consideration. I too have seen your house. It's a great project. It's going to be beautiful. And you have a very talented team working on this. But I share Councilmember Lynch's analysis of this long list of revisions and wonder how many were absolutely necessary and how many may have been discretionary and what might have been done to save time if the many requests for revision had been collected and presented to the city in a more, much more efficient manner. I struggled with, I really thought a lot about the weather and remember these wet winters, but they're certainly not the only wet winters we've had. We have a few drought years, and then we have a few wet years. And it's really all part of the picture, although it's extremely inconvenient to people who are doing construction during that time. We have looked at other CTLs recently. As Vice Mayor Cooper mentioned, these are not our favorite things to look at, but we try to treat everybody as equally as possible. I mean, that's really an important thing for us to try to do. And that's why we spend so much time doing it. But we have had just about every CTL appeal that has come before us in the last year has, has mentioned weather, regardless of what year it was. It's almost always something that is, is, is part of the complaint. So I would not reduce it by the weather because I don't remember reducing it for other opponents. Although I, I'm happy to stand corrected if I'm inaccurate on that. But I don't remember allowing for that in recent memory. So as difficult as it is, I would deny the appeal.
Okay. I agree with the other two council members. It's a beautiful project. But, and certainly, every project knows they're going to run into unexpected and issues. I feel that almost 90% of your reasoning for the appeal was actually given for the six-month extension. And so there was a great awareness of everything that was going on. I think the wet weather was essentially the only difference between the six-month extension and the final appeal. So I, although it's a very long time, and it winds up being an extremely large amount of money, I also have to agree with Councilmember Kim Nitzer that I would have to deny the project as submitted. So any other comments?
No.
I move that we deny the appeal.
Okay. All those in favor?
I need a second.
Oh, sorry. Second? I'll second. Okay, is all those in favor?
Hi.
Oppose? No. Okay. So thank you very much. And I will return this to Mayor Mark to continue on to the next items.
Thank you. Moving on to item 6A, discussion on possible action on a revocable license for private improvements in the city-owned tide lot for the property at 228 Beach Road. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Mark, and council members. For your consideration this evening is an application for a revocable license to allow new stairs, landings, and landscaping within the city tide lot at 228 Beach Road. This presentation, this presentation will give a background of the past planning commission actions, a description and analysis of the project, and staff's recommendation to council. On May 21st, the planning commission discussed applications for design review variants and revocable license to construct new stairs and landings on the city-owned tide lot. At the meeting, commissioners suggested that the project would benefit from landscaping and erosion control measures to stabilize the hillside. On June 18th, the applicant submitted revised plans, and the planning commission unanimously granted design review and variance approvals to construct and install a new staircase, landings, and landscaping, and unanimously voted to recommend approval of the revocable license. Commissioners commented that the new stairs and landscaping served as a public benefit by stabilizing the hillside, which previously had three landslides. Commissioners commented that the new stairs take a smaller footprint than the existing stairs and thereby give public land back to the city. Additionally, commissioners noted that the new stairs would not impede access across city land as passage along the tide lot is only available at the beach at low tide. Commissioners mentioned that a pedestrian could cross the hillside as well by going underneath the proposed six to seven foot above grade staircase. The subject property is located on a 21,000 square foot parcel outlined here in yellow. The site contains a walkway and dilapidated staircase at the rear, which leads through city property into a private dock leased by the property owners. Here, site photographs show the existing tide lot and dilapidated stairs below 228 Beach Road. On private property, the site currently includes a concrete patio and walkway. And on the city-owned tide lot, structures include the concrete path, wood steps, and retaining walls. As mentioned, the site has, was subject to three prior landslides shaded here in blue. The project proposes to demolish the existing concrete walkways and wood steps and to construct a new set of wood stairs and landings that would run from private property onto the city tide lot shown here in blue. To address erosion control, the applicant proposes mesh netting to be installed where two of the three previous landslides occurred, and eight drilled piers on city land to construct the new stairs. The proposed stairs and landings would stand six to seven feet above existing grade at their highest points, and this would be below the existing stone retaining walls. Additionally, the project proposes landscaping consisting of three Santa Cruz ironwood trees and 15 gallon pots, 14 point rays, sea notice, and five gallon pots, and point raised manzanita ground cover. As a gift to the public, the Belvidere Land Company conveyed shoreline property along Belvidere Cove to the city in 1896, commonly referred to as a strip. The deed places a series of restrictions on the use of the city-owned tide lot. One restriction, paraphrased here, states, "No private structures other than private wharves, boat houses, or bathing houses shall ever be permitted, and none shall be added to those pre-existing." Staff notes page four of the 1896 Belvidere Land Company deed, which includes a reversion clause stating, "If any conditions of this grant when made are violated, the said strip of land shall revert to this company." The project requests a revocable license to allow existing retaining walls and new stairs, landings, and landscaping on the city-owned tide lot. A revocable license for private use of the public right of way may be granted in the discretion of the city council when there is some benefit to the public. Staff suggests that the project benefits the public as the improvements will stabilize the hillside, which has been prone to landslides. The proposed landscaping will enhance the aesthetic appeal of city land without impeding views or privacy on adjacent neighbors. Additionally, the new stairs will not impede passage along the city tide lot. Should council approve the revocable license tonight, staff has made amendments to the indemnity clause within the revocable license for council's consideration. The amended license available on the dais and the back counter for your review tonight. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for our planning staff relating to the report just presented?
I guess I would ask, okay, sorry, I guess I'd ask. I mean, I'm assuming that none of the piers that exist there and stairways down to them were built prior to 1896. So they must have all come after the deed. And it was, it didn't have any impact. Nothing happened. And the deed didn't disappear. It's still there and considered city property, even though all that construction occurred. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor Kimmich?
Couple of questions, kind of probably of planning. Is the dock lease current?
Yes, it is.
And there are several requirements of the dock. The payment to the city plus statements of the condition of the dock, is that connect? Under consideration?
I don't know. The planning and building department doesn't typically manage the dock leases. I would guess that the property owners might have a better idea in terms of paying that dock lease. But I can look in our files. I think I know where to find it.
Okay, is there any current application?
Okay, is there any current application for improvements to the dock?
No.
Okay. And has there been any, has the city undertaken any geotechnical investigation to support the finding that the piers protect the slope?
No.
Okay, so that would also be questions of the applicant.
Yeah, I do know that after the first planning commission hearing, a few of the planning commissioners recommended that additional piers be part of their application to help further stabilize that slope. And there were peers added at the subsequent planning commission hearing.
Okay, so my question to staff is the staff report mentions a public benefit, which we really look at closely to the, involving stabilization of that very unstable slope. I couldn't find any data to support that.
Oh, I think the addition of the, the extra piers and the netting, I'm not a soils engineer, would help stabilize that slope, thus provide a public benefit.
Okay, I'll, I'll be asking the same questions of the applicant. They may have more on that, thank you.
I have a question that I think is directed to our city attorney or, or anyone who wants to chime in. We have this revocable license draft that was put on the dais that is revised from the one that was in our packet, right? And I've been trying to read it quickly. I'm not sure I understand. I mean, I can see the words are different between paragraph one and paragraph two.
Just to clarify, the only change is in bold. And I'm sorry that the formatting is off, so it's number two that has been added to the revocable license.
So we would strike one? We would strike the old paragraph one?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right. That makes sense, thank you.
Thank you.
I have, I have one more question. And I actually asked Rebecca earlier to just check on this. Our, our staff report does not include, unless I missed it, the resolution of the planning commission with the conditions of approval. And it's clear that this request would require approval of a, a number of different agencies. Full disclosure, I'm the alternate to BCDC for the North Bay Counties, Solano, Napa, Sonoma and Moverian. And nothing in my question at all would imply anything that they would do. But when I looked at the resolution, it didn't actually mention that approval of BCDC would be a condition of approval. It said something about and other agencies. BCDC has stated publicly that they encourage people who are building in lands under their jurisdiction to reach out to them earlier rather than later in the process. And I was just wondering whether that engagement is anticipated as a part of a condition of approval of the planning commission action.
I just spoke to the building official about it. It is actually not a condition of approval. It's a requirement of a building permit issuance.
Okay.
We will not issue a building permit unless BCDC has approved it.
Okay, so. I may ask some questions on that later, but yes, thank you.
As lead agency, we are required to go first in the planning process and then BCDC would follow prior to building permit approval, I believe. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Thank you, I don't have any questions. If there are any more questions. Thank you. Open the public comment period for this item and have anyone speaking for the project, please.
I'm Lillian Murray and I live at 228 Beach Road. I want to correct one thing that was mentioned, which is the mesh that was put into the presentation for the planning commission was specifically excluded in the discussion because that is very expensive, predominantly on city land where most of the erosion happened. And that was outside of the scope of what we're doing. So as part of this project, we have not agreed to put mesh onto that project. And that was specifically discussed at the planning commission. So, and I'm happy to take any questions yet too, since it sounds like you're aware of what's going on.
With that, what other type of erosion control measures are, are proposed in the project, if any?
So there were the pilings that are put there and there are a lot of things that are being done to stabilize the home because that's our most serious concern is we don't want the house to go downhill. But after the planning commission reviews twice, we came, the first one, they made some recommendations. And so we added some additional pilings to give it more stability and we added landscaping, which was at the request of the planning commission.
Thank you. Any further questions for the applicant?
I do. Is the, is the purpose of the steps access to the dock?
Yes.
Is there any other purpose?
I think it's the value of the home and the dock.
We're just looking at the steps at the moment. Is the, is there any purpose to the steps other than access to the dock?
I'm, I'm not sure what you're looking for there, but the reason that we want to have stairs is that we have a lease to the dock for which we're obligated to have the access and to maintain it. And that is our, our ability to maintain it. The other benefit which we found in part of the planning commission happened to be when a garage burned up. And the recognition that having access to that dock is very important for our safety.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other further questions? House member Lynch?
I, I have one.
Okay.
Your replacement stairway is moving from where it was. And it, my question is, is this considered a safer location?
Yes, we would have put it where it was before, but there had been so much erosion that it was logistically not possible based on the reports from the engineers. And I do take note of the prior one that we can't always rely on what our people are telling us. But based on what we have down there, this would be a more secure route that, and that to replace it exactly as was, was just prohibitively not possible.
Right, okay, thank you.
Sorry about that. Making a few notes. I'll close the, any, any other further comment in the public comment? Seeing none here, Madam Clerk?
No hands raised.
Thank you, so close the public comment and bring it back to the city council for discussion. Council, sorry, Vice Mayor Cooper, would you like to?
Okay.
Go first?
I think I, I don't have a problem with this revocable license. In my mind, these stairs existed to reach the pier that was allowed and it's been there for many years. And I don't view it as a new construction, but replacement due to the city's failing land there. I would agree with the planning commission in their assessment of this. And I also think it would be important to follow up on the planning commission chair's suggestion that we continue to look at the deed from 1986, 1987 so that when other projects come, we have very clear direction and we don't have to worry about the deed being an issue. But it's also my understanding that there has already been a revision to the deed, maybe one, maybe more, I don't know. And so I think looking at it is worthwhile because I'm not sure that this deed is quite so sacrosanct as we've painting it out to be. So I, I do recommend that we look carefully at that.
Thank you. I can jump in next. I, I like Councilmember Cooper and Vice Mayor Cooper. I can see my way to this revocable license. And I think it boils down to two separate and distinct issues. One is the, for the license itself, the public benefit. And I think the, the planning commission looked at it pretty comprehensively over their two meetings. And the, I, I concur and, and will confirm or agree with their consideration that the stairs and landscaping do serve a public benefit by stabilizing, stabilizing the hillside and reducing the, the scope and scale and square footage of the existing stairs. And actually, it's a give back to the city as far as usage of that public land. I think the second considerable issue is the conveyance deed itself and the definition of private structures. And in the deed, it talks about the, you know, what, what private structures are allowed and bathhouses and boat houses and so forth. I think it's an error of omission, but I can't imagine access wasn't one of those allowed or required structures to be, to be allowable in that conveyance. So I agree that, that, that should be clarified if we possibly can to allow for that. And I do know that the planning commission did look at, made every attempt and/or investigation that the staircase was as low and as, as, as close to the ground as possible, given the, the steep topography and the, and the, the rise and run of the steps. This is the only way it could be safely constructed. So I'm confident that was adequately and appropriately looked at. I also think that the reversion issue is somewhat mitigated by more recent understanding of that clause and less of an issue for the city should we make that, approve this revocable license. So I can, I can agree with Vice Mayor Cooper that this is a reasonable and appropriate license for this use. House Mayor Lynch?
Thank you, I agree with the comments from my colleagues. I can support the, the revocable license. I did study the work, the extensive work that the planning commission did when they unanimously voted to approve the revocable license, recognizing that it's the decision ultimately of this council to do so. There was reference to the standard of some public benefit. And I find in this record, there is substantial evidence or sufficient, I don't want to use a loaded term. There is adequate evidence to support the finding of some public benefit. It's articulated in the staff report that the proposed landscaping will help stabilize the hillside and also add an aesthetic improvement. And there's also reference in the staff report to the eight piers, 18 inches in diameter, that'll be drilled approximately 16 feet into the hillside to construct the new stairs. And those piers will reinforce the hillside and stabilize the soil. I also went through the report from Roger Hartley, the consulting engineer. It's titled slope stabilization and repair to dock access and reviewed the plans for the various piers that are proposed. And I conclude that this revocable license should be granted for the reasons my colleagues have said and also because it meets the some public benefit standard.
So I concur with my fellow council members and can support this. But I have a couple of things that I think are very important to note. I would urge the applicant to read the license very carefully because sometimes you have to be careful what you ask for. Paragraph condition eight, which is common in all of our revocable licenses, states that the license does not convey an exclusive right to use the premises, which in this case would mean that, and I, and I looked at the plans and, and as currently presented, they seem to comply. But you would not be able to lock a gate, for example. The revocable licenses are a common use of the revocable license area, even as it gives some rights to the, to the licensee. So it's worth noting that. It also indicates, I don't quite know why, how this would apply in this case, but paragraph five states that it has to comply with the American, Americans with Disabilities Act. I'm not quite sure how a staircase would even do that, but that is in this revocable license. The other thing I think is worth noting, if the purpose of these steps, which have other public benefits, is to reach the dock, those docks are, those dock leases come up for renewal or expiration in, I believe, the year 2039. And it seems that this and the other revocable licenses issued for the docks on Long Beach Road that are, that are solely for access to those leases may, in, in a de facto way, be co-terminous with the, with the, with the lease on the dock. The other thing is that the, that, I don't know if all the leases are the same, but the leases I have looked at require that the, let's say, maintain the dock and not allow it to fall into disrepair or that would constitute a default in the lease. And so I would strongly urge the applicant to seek the appropriate level of design review to improve the dock so that the, so that the applicant does not fall into default on the dock lease. I did a site visit. It, it does look like it could use some improvements to avoid falling into dereliction. So those are a few aspects of the license we're prepared to approve tonight. But on those conditions, I can approve this request.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the revocable license for private improvements on a Tide Lot for property at 228 Beach Road?
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I can, I can second it. I want to clarify that the license we're referring to is the one that was on the dais tonight that has the duplicate paragraphs at the top. We're going to strike the one that's currently numbered one and the one that's currently numbered two will then become number one. And I wanted to note that also because of Councilmember Kim Nitzer's comments in reference to paragraphs five and eight would actually be paragraphs four and seven, just for the record.
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, thank you, congratulations. I'd like to move now to item 6B, discussion on possible action on a revocable license for private improvements in the public right of way along 20, at 26 Peninsula Road.
Thank you again, Mayor Mark. For your consideration this evening is an application for a revocable license to allow existing improvements within the right of way at 26 Peninsula Road.
On May 8th, staff granted design review approval for improvements on private property. This included resurfacing the roof, installing new pavers, and replacing the garage door. The project also proposed replacing the concrete driveway with a new uncolored concrete driveway. The project requires a revocable license for the existing improvements within the Peninsula Road right of way. Here, those improvements include existing landscaping and the concrete walkway and concrete driveway. The existing landscaping and walkway will not be modified as part of this project. Staff suggests that the existing improvements enhance the aesthetic appeal of the property frontage. Should council approve the revocable license this evening, staff has included language in condition number four of the license stating that landscaping shall not impede access or use to the adjacent sidewalk. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Sorry, thank you. Just to, just to be clear, it, it is stated in the report, but really, the only reason this is being modified, it's not being modified, is because there is no existing revocable license. If there was one, there's, there's no changes of, of note to require modification.
That's, that's correct.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions for our planning staff on this proposed license?
I, I had a quick one. Are we going to use the new souped-up hold harmless clause that we just put into the last revocable license? Because this one doesn't, this one has the old clause, and if that's new one is an improvement, which I presume you guys think it is, I would, it seems like we might want to import that into this one, no?
Or was that language just put in for the reversion issues?
Yeah, that language was put in specific for a revocable license in the tied lot, but should the council think that the language is better, we're happy to.
Nope, say no, say no more. Thank you.
Any other further questions? I'd like to open the public comment, allow the applicant to speak, or anybody who wishes to.
The applicant is on V Zoom.
Okay, thank you. If they wish to speak. Hi Ken, I think you're muted.
I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I'm here if you have any questions, but it seems like it's going pretty good, so maybe I'll just shut up.
Thank you, Ken. Any questions for the applicant? No, thank you, Ken. No, no questions. I'll close, he read the room. Any other comments on this application?
There are no other hands raised.
Thank you. Then I'll close the public comment and bring it up for consideration by the council. Sorry, Councilmember Lynch?
I have no comments. I'd be prepared to make a motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Kinnison?
I'm prepared to second. It's, this is a very straightforward application. I did a site visit, and it's exactly appropriate for this.
Okay. I think I agree as well. So I can make a motion to approve the revocable license for the private improvements at 26 Peninsula Road. Second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Moving on to item seven is our open forum, an opportunity for any citizens to briefly address the council any matter that does not appear on tonight's agenda. Anybody in the room who would like to address the council for the open forum? Seeing nobody, Madam Clerk, is anybody online?
Mayor Mark, there are no hands raised.
Thank you. Close the open forum, and I will adjourn the August 12th meeting of the city council, and thank you all for attending.